Recording amendment present and absent.
Barton.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Kingston.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement.
Hi, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma. Certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the County Clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additional items of due business to the agenda?
I don't have any.
The minutes of the January seventh regular meeting. Approval of finance report and the vote to improve, uh, we add those to our consent agenda now, don't we? Vote to approve purchase order of conferences as referenced. Vote to, and building fund items as referenced. Item three point five, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, approval of the board policy and procedures, and declaring any items of surplus. Back to the minutes. Changes on the minutes, okay? The finance report.
We'll start with investments. Hi, classmates. Right now, we have, all of our investments are, are invested between three, three banks in town, with the majority being between Bank Central and Alba State. We're earning a range of four point three five, five and a quarter percent on those investments. If you average it, it's gonna be closer to five percent. So there's a lot more at that five or better than there is below it. So, uh, the general fund, we have six million, three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars invested. Uh, the building fund is two million, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand. So between building and general fund or operating accounts, we've got nine million, three hundred sixty-five thousand invested, I guess savings account, we're called that. Uh, child nutrition fund has a hundred ninety thousand. Uh, sinking fund, a little bit of leftover bond money from years ago, has eleven thousand. And our gift fund, uh, is two hundred sixty thousand invested there. So, again, like I say, they're earning about, somewhere around five percent is pretty close. When we look at our revenues, um, start with the general fund. As of the end of January, we've collected fourteen million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars, uh, in the general fund. For the month of January, we collected one million, six hundred ten thousand, three, six hundred thirty thousand dollars. That was four hundred and seventy-four thousand less than we had in January of twenty twenty-four, but we can, we collected one point two million, um, more in December. So when you, when you look at a two-month picture on that, um, we've still collected an increase of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars.
What increase?
Yeah, the December, January of twenty-three, four, December, January four, five, we're up about seventy-seven thousand percent, almost, yeah, right, seventy-seven thousand. Now, let me back up, that was building fund. We've collected seven hundred sixty-three thousand more in the general fund. In the building fund, um, we've collected four million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars for the year. Uh, for January, we collected a hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars. That was seventy-two thousand less than January of twenty-four. But again, you combine the two, we're up seventy-seven thousand, um, just those two-month pictures. So, uh, it would appear, you know, people may have paid taxes or paid the full year at once. I mean, there's a lot of reasons, so it looks really good for that two-year, two-month picture. Let's see what it looks like in May, when the dust is starting to settle. It gives me hope we're at least staying flat and not losing. Just kind of an expenditure comparison. When you look at our expenditures, we have, in the general fund, we have encumbered eighty-six thousand, forty-one dollars less than we had this time last year. So let's count a year to date. Um, and we've paid out a hundred forty thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars less than we had this time last year. But you look at the building fund, and we've encumbered three hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred twenty more in the building fund, and paid out three hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars more. Part of that, we've tried to shift a little bit of pressure off the general fund, okay? The other big piece of it is, we, we paid off the, uh, said general leasing agreement, we outright bought the activity bus. And then we bought those five route buses that, that we, uh, normally lease. So we had kind of upfront expenditure there that should pay us down the road. So, put the whole picture together, we paid about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars more this year than we had this time last year. The buses were three hundred fifty thousand, just in this ballpark, okay? So, um, picture to picture, looks like we're staying, all our normal expenses staying pretty flat. The bus, the bus purchases, those six buses, ski the numbers a little bit. So, anyway, I think we're doing, it's a pretty good picture. If our revenue's really up and our expenses are at least staying flat, that's a pretty good picture to do it. That's my finance report.
Okay. Let's move to the extra duty assignments.
Excuse me. Just got a handful of changes. The first one, we, uh, we appropriated the head varsity basketball coach stipend, Trey Johnson, for finishing the season as the head varsity coach. We've had a couple positions open at the middle school. Middle school assistant track, I mean, that's a, that's a slug of kids. It's kind of all hands on deck when you give those track needs. Kimberly Cole, she, uh, I think she played, she ran track or was thrower at Cherokee. I think she's originally from Birmingham, maybe. Finished high school at Cherokee. Um, and so has helped some of those schools, anyway, she's in the colleges. She's really interested in helping here in, uh, Alba. Had a lot of success as a, as a trackster in high school, so that should be a good addition. So Kimberly Cole in middle school girls track, and it's listed, middle school girls, remember, they, they all help each other. I mean, again, it's kind of all hands on deck. Um, Debbie Whittit, Debbie Whittit, uh, agreed to help with, you know, middle school track as well. So those two assistant positions still that way. And then Teagan Coates, again, is another student here, here in Northwestern. I know she's worked with Mrs. White, our golf coach, girl golf, quite a bit. And with some of the roles Mr. Buehler's taken on, it'd probably be good to try and have an assistant up there. So, Teagan has shown interest in that, so I recommend Teagan to be assistant, uh, golf coach for boards and boards both.
Okay, sounds good. We got two new fund reports.
Kind of that time of year, it's not a lot of activity in the activity fund. The majority of any fundraisers or anything like that is going to be with, uh, maybe homecoming t-shirt sales. The vast majority is concessions and gate between the two, so, a lot of that stuff, pretty normal stuff. Looks like, looks like all of our funds are staying pretty healthy, so, just don't want to report on the activity fund.
Okay, and what about, do we have any fundraisers?
We don't have any fundraisers.
No fundraisers. And we do have some interaccount transfers.
We've got a request to transfer a thousand dollars from bicycle student council to the middle school bug bikes account.
And child nutrition report.
Child nutrition, um, we served two hundred ninety-seven more breakfast and twenty-four fewer lunches than in December, so, uh, that's where those numbers fell. I'm not sure why we had fewer lunches, but breakfast went skyrocketing. On the revenue side, put together some data on that, and I want to start tracking. In January, um, in January, we revenue two thousand, two hundred seventy dollars more than in January of twenty-four. So, when I look, when I look across these, the bottom of this chart, look across those, there's a lot more black numbers than red, so it appears as though we're, child nutrition is staying ahead of the curve a little bit. Um, again, I'd remind everybody that we, uh, we have to rewrite that RFP, and I've been told that lunch prices will, they're gonna have to go up under that. What we did that was in twenty nineteen, so it was the year before COVID. We all know what groceries have done since COVID, so it may, you know, lock the price in at that, it just makes sense that we're gonna have to increase our cost when we do that RFP, so, anyway.
Have any policy things to be brought or items of surplus, so?
Don't have any, they were last year.
We need to go back and pick up the conferences. Skip past. Building fund or the?
Uh, on expenditures, there's, there's not a, again, we're in that time of year where there's just not a lot of expenses outside the norm, you know, just the normal stuff. Just to, to throw some attention to, we had a ninety-dollar purchase order, number three twelve, to Vanguard Academy for entry fees for TSA competition, so TSA chapter, which is a new, new program for us going to competitions. Uh, three thirteen was to Bureau of Education Researchers for professional development, six hundred ninety-five dollars there. And three fourteen and fifteen are to IXL Learning, and that was also for professional development. Teachers are, I think those are the train, train trainer, maybe? Anyway, our teachers are going and doing the things that way. And then three twenty-six was to RT Diesel for best repairs. So on the general fund, on the building fund, there was only one. Here was to Great Dog Mechanical for refrigerated repairs in the middle school for two hundred dollars. Those are the things to point out.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. All right. Item number four is the, we need to approve those. I thought we didn't, we didn't, did we? Okay, let's have a motion. Golly, we're just, we're making a little bit of progress. I'd make the motion that we accept. Three point one and three point eleven, I presume.
Okay.
That's second.
Hansen.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kingston.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
All right, now, we'll, item number four, we'll take it.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Hot seats tonight are very fun.
You're over here, it's fine, it's nice to watch.
It's a spotlight. Um, I just wanted to report on our numbers. I don't have to get nervous and look everybody in the eye. Um, K has sixty students, kindergarten has eighty-seven, first has eighty-eight, and I split those up by how many students are in each class, so that you can see that we are busting at the seedings at Washington. Uh, so our biggest class has twenty-five, that's Ms. Raiders' class. Madeline gets to enjoy that, Ms. Rankin, as our student teacher. We're introducing separately, or should I do that now? This is Ms. Madeline Rankin, she's our student teacher this semester. We're very lucky to have her, she's been a sub for our building for the last year and a half, probably, so she just fits right in with us, we're very happy to have her. Um, I put a few activities here. We complete vision and hearing screenings for all of our students every year, so we finish that in January. The twenty-fourth, we celebrated the one-hundredth day of school. That's a really big deal at Washington because we count, we, we want to count to a hundred, we're working for that every day, so every student knows when we're close to the one-hundredth day. So that was a great celebration. Uh, this Wednesday is World Read Aloud Day, which is really just great at Washington because we do that every day, all day long, but we'll do some special things to celebrate that. February twelfth is early dismissal. The fourteenth is Valentine's Day, we've got lots of celebrating planned for that. Um, no school for teacher in-service on the seventeenth. And I also want to just extend a very heartfelt thank you to Alba State Bank, because they made a donation to us to build an outdoor classroom. So I have a committee of teachers together that's working on plans for that, so hopefully this spring, we can get things purchased and make that a reality. So thank you, Alba State Bank. Um, I don't know if you can open the videos, I hope you can, I think I gave you access. Will it let you? Okay, great. So this is the robot that I brought to show you, like, a couple months ago, but this is a video of students doing it.
We did ourselves.
Just, yeah, just watch, that's great. So they tried, like, she gave them a mystery card, it had, you know, they have to follow the certain colors for the little robot card to go in the right order. They're coding them with these colors. And she gives them, like, a mystery card, so it tells them three colors that they can use, and then the rest of them, they have to figure out. And so this group, you know, made their little square and just to celebrate, like, we did it! Because there's so many times they put the wrong, you know, color, so it turns left instead of right, so it was great fun that day. Um, again, we have the visit from the OETT evaluation team coming on the twenty-first, so we're really looking forward to that and getting a plan together, what we want to show off to them. And then I put another video in of our hegemony phonemic awareness, because this is a small piece of our day, but sometimes it's hard to understand because we hear phonics and it's like a little mini lesson. It's actually not the same as phonemic awareness, and most of our early childhood foundational skills are phonemic awareness, so I, I can read you exactly what I wrote you. Phonics involves connecting sounds to written letters and letter combinations, but phonemic awareness focuses on recognizing and manipulating individual sounds. So you're not really putting them together yet, you're recognizing the individual sounds, and then how they can work together. So we really, you know, that's really an all-day thing that we do is phonemic awareness in every vocab word we use and every sight word that we learn. But this program is just like a, it's eight to ten minutes a day, but that's just a really small snapshot, but it's a very ritual, routine that each teacher is doing every day for, um, I guess that just routine aspect of reviewing letter sounds in small words. So this is an example of what that looks like, and this is Ms. Motta in her class.
Good, give me the middle sound. What's the middle sound? Very good, okay. Give me the three sounds in the word vet. Good, give me the three sounds in huh. Good, hands up, everybody doing it. Say huh. Say at. At book. Say pig. Tick with a p. Say fun. Tick with a b. Say dog. Tick with a d. Good job, we're almost done. Say mess. Change the m to a u. Say peg. Change the p to a b. Say job. Change the j to a k.
So, that's, like I said, Ms. Motta in her class, but, I mean, we're doing it sightwide, and I feel like it's building such a strong foundation of understanding those phonemes, so I love walking by and hearing that because it's a great participation. And when I first listened, I was telling Ms. Nys longer, like, as an adult, I'm like, uh, uh, take away the uh, okay, that's a huh. Like, it's harder than you think, but those kids are like, huh, 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 they're so great at it. So, little, just side note of education, what's phonics and phonemic awareness, and just so proud of Washington for making that a sightwide thing, so, strong greeting in our futures.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to go on a different order. Always after me.
And, uh, by the way, we do have more than six kids in third grade, I'm not sure what happened.
That was a day.
And, then, yeah. A day, but that was actually seven. Um, okay, so our enrollment unfortunately has gone down a few more since, uh, even I recorded last time, our third grade is getting hit, so, you know, it'll be easy next year, forget it. Um, a hundred fifty-three total, ninety second grade, sixty-three, not six, third grade. Uh, hopefully we won't lose anymore. We did have a third grader come back, so that was great. Um, Longfellow Night, our, uh, Mrs. Martini reached out to Mrs. Whittit. We do a Longfellow Night tradition, I don't know, it's longer than what I've been at Longfellow, um, where the students go and do basketball drills at a high school football game, a middle school football game, and they sing the National Anthem. I think we skipped middle school, maybe last year, maybe it's been a couple years, but Mrs. Martini reached out to Mrs. Whittit and asked her if she would have some kids that would want to come perform, and she gladly accepted. So, Monday, the twenty-seventh, some second and third grade students perform during the AMS Boys and Girls Halftime. And then Tuesday, tomorrow, is Longfellow Night at the high school basketball game, so second and third grade students will perform the National Anthem, um, directed by Mrs. Klein, prior to the varsity ladybug game. And second graders will perform basketball skills during the halftime of the varsity ladybug game, and third graders will do it at the halftime of the varsity goldbug game. Totally optional activity, but they, they practice all this, Ms. Klein and Mrs. Whittit, they prepare the students in the class, so they feel confident going in, and we always have a great showing, it's super fun. Parents love seeing their kids out there, so we're excited about that tomorrow. So if you guys are available, come and enjoy watching your future ladybugs and goldbugs. Um, spell-a-thon, so excited to have this fundraiser back. Um, we will start our spell-a-thon at Longfellow, I think we have been, nineteen, two thousand nineteen was the last time we did a spell-a-thon. It's a great fundraiser, very lucrative for Longfellow, and we need it. We're running on fumes, um, our activity count right now. Literally without this fundraiser, I will have to start asking parents to pay for field trips and whatnot. That's where we're at. So, super excited to have this fundraiser back, it pays for field trips, PVIS incentives, AR rewards, end-of-the-year activities, and just other supplies and needs that we need for our Longfellow students. So we will start, information will go home next week, and we're ready to go. The kids will do, uh, we, in the past, we've done a hundred-word spelling test, we decided we would make it fifty, a little bit more manageable, and that kids can really concentrate and get their words all correct, and then they'll start collecting money, and we hope to have it wrapped up by March seventh. Um, I'll put in a plug for the Alba Elementary Sister Club, they're such great support of our elementary schools. They have started their Kiss a Gram fundraiser, that's the annual fundraiser that they do, and their money, um, goes to support, um, just really developing a great culture between parents and our staff. They, um, the money goes to goodies for birthdays, teacher appreciation week, and other times throughout the year, like, we just got a bag of, like, bath and body soaps, just for our bathrooms, just kind of have a nice little good smelling soap, just little things like that can brighten the day. Um, they, this is their biggest fundraiser, they sell little kiss, it's like three chocolate kisses with a card, it's a dollar, and we, um, like I said, it's their only fundraiser, I think, pretty much, for the elementary. I know that's what I buy my kid, that's what he buys all his classes, his teachers, we support them, they support us, it's a big old reciprocity there. Um, and they also cover our, a lot of times, they'll cover a, uh, class or a recess duty, so our teachers can get together and have a lunch together, they usually do that once a year. They've redecorated all of our lounges now, um, they spoil us, and we really appreciate their support, so, Kiss a Gram, go bless them. Um, I also wanted to recognize Longfellow Teacher of the Year and the District Rising Star. Megan McMurphy was selected as our, uh, Longfellow Teacher of the Year, she's third grade teacher, she's in her twentieth year in education, thirteen, she's in her thirteenth year here in Alba. You know, Megan had, you got to have Megan be one of your students' teachers, you know she's great, she's entertaining, and kids just love to learn from her. She's definitely, uh, gonna be a great representative for Longfellow. And Ms. Klein, who is our elementary music teacher for all elementary schools, is our district rising star. She's in her second year in education, both here at Alba, and it's very well deserved, um, I think, um, they'll represent Alba well. As you can see, we've got some things coming up, kind of the run-of-the-mill, not too crazy in the month of February, which is great, but I also kind of want to take a special moment to, just, we talk about the symbol of excellence in our students, and we also, you know, it goes into our staff as well. You know, I, I'm trying to, I was talking to Stephanie, I'm not sure how many years now I've been at Longfellow, but since I've been at Longfellow, I'm almost taking it personal, I legit had three certified staff resignations sometime in the year, two of them were at the beginning of the year, and I've probably had at least four para resignations. Nothing personal, health, you know, life happens, better job opportunities, health happens, all those things, and like, Longfellow staff step up, and I'm, oh my God, I don't want to be emotional, but, you know, it is, it's a full of excellence. You know, when they go above and beyond and to do what they should do, it's not, oh my gosh, that's embarrassing.
Act like you're in trouble.
Or is that fun? No, because seriously, and I know it's not just my school, but I've seen it time and time again, I don't have to ask, they come up and ask me, how can they help? And I know we're all facing shortages right now with sickness, and four, I had four out today, one sub, and by golly, you know, I had everyone step in, and, and we made it. Not what, every kid was served and they were served what. So, you know, I just wanted to, Longfellow's doing it great, and I know they're doing it great everywhere else, but they need to pack it up.
Great shout-out to them, great.
Now I'm embarrassed. All right, on to Lincoln. Um, our enrollment is a hundred and fifty-eight, we have eighty-one fourth grade and seventy-seven fifth grade students, so we did go up one from last, um, from January. We had our fifth grade music professor, Charlie Brown, if you're able to see that, it was great, again, thank you, Ms. Klein, for, she does a great job. And, I mean, I know some of, some of you, some of, uh, people here had kids out there, and just the way they memorize the lines, and, and shout-out to Julie Benningfield, too, because she helps, uh, helps those kids work their lines during, um, the weeks ahead of that, so it was a good time. And I also want to congratulate twenty-four, twenty-five Teacher of the Year for each of our buildings at Washington with Sadie Wilson, Longfellow with Megan McMurphy, Lincoln was Julie Benningfield, uh, middle school with Sasha Kirkpatrick, high school was Mary Tyree, and then again, our Rising Star, Emma Klein, all very deserving, um, so shout-out to all those teachers, and, and thank you for everyone in the district for, for voting. Um, we have our field trips coming up this month, so we're super excited about that. Fourth grade and fifth grade both go to the Science Museum, but just at different times, fourth grade goes Wednesday, so we'll bus down there, and then fifth grade goes on the thirteenth. So it's a great trip, we decided last year we're gonna flip-flop, last year we went to the Thunder game, um, it was the Thunder B game, loved that, and then we're gonna just kind of flip-flop back and forth, so. Um, early release day, uh, we will work on our book study of the emotional poverty. And then, we had our spelling bee at Lincoln, and I would like to congratulate, um, all of the, those And then, we had our Spelling Bee at Lincoln, and I would like to congratulate, um, all of the, those who competed the finalists, um, Boye Pinkleton, Callie Scoggins, Peyton Montsevius, James, Larson Vance, Walton Murray, Stephen Graves, Hayes Potter, Tommy Newton, Lawson Reed, Taya Williams, St. Elliot, Wade Tucker, Joey Peace, Kay Scobie, and Bailey Lawrence, they were the winners for the classroom, and they competed for the top three, which our first place was Hayes Potter, second place was Peyton Montsevius, and third place was Kay Scobie, so that was a successful event, and those students did a great job. It's fun when I go in and watch, into the classrooms, and I watch the Spelling Bee, and they're not used to standing up and spelling out loud, and, right, so, it's completely different, but they did a great job. Um, coming up, we have, uh, on February sixth, fifth grade's going to Chisholm, they're beta meet. We will celebrate Dr. Seuss Week, February twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, and then February twenty-fifth, fourth grade goes to beta meet, then we're having our BB gun safety in, uh, February twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth as well, we have multiple members of our local law enforcement, fire department come in, help with that event, so it's great to have them in our, in our gym, um, with the kids and, and having that relationship, so, we enjoy that. And I was also going to say, you know, our, uh, our staffs and the, the willingness to come in and cover a class or help out, or, you know, because, because of the sickness, and we are very fortunate, and that's why I think we love our jobs, because teachers are just great human beings, and when I say teachers, I mean, all of our, all of our staff who works with kids, um, custody, I mean, so, we're very, very grateful, and, yeah, you see them out and about. I think thanks.
That's very true, I was talking to some, uh, to my secretaries today, and I'm like, holy smokes, like, I don't remember having to ask so many teachers to use their plan to cover, you know, for sick teachers out, it, it's been, it's been rough past the weeks, but, we're making, we're getting through.
And we have it closed.
Yeah, we have it closed. So, um, today I decided not to bring, um, the eighth grade science projects on sexual reproduction, um, they were super entertaining to watch, they, they chose either, um, a plant or an animal, um, they did a great job on all of them, so, there, there will be some pictures posted on Facebook later, they were great projects, I saw shark, I saw a deer, white-tailed deer, and I even asked some extra questions about that one, and he did a great job with answering them, so, just a little.
No pressure.
Well.
Time like a project.
The kids are having a good time, and then they like to try to roast each other and ask all kinds of extra questions.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So, it was funny. Um, since our last board report, we are down about six students, the last board report that we had, um, we were down about fifteen, so we did pick up some extras, um, but, you know, we had some big families move at Christmas, and that just, that just kind of happened, so, our total right now is two twenty-three. Um, in the junior high division of the vocal OK CDA, um, we sent some, some students to participate in the All-State Festival held in Oklahoma City, um, this includes the high school freshman class, so I will, I'll talk about them, Isaac Antone, Russell Smiley, and Merritt Mans went and competed in that, um, the middle school actually had three students qualified, Joplin Bratt, Navia Stefan, and Lila Schmidt, and I'd like to give a special shout-out to Isaac Antone for receiving his three-year medal, so he's competed three years in a row, that, that's, that's a pretty big deal for him.
Was Isaac the one that played saxophone? That was, that was Toby, he's a senior, Toby.
Okay.
I thought I got the right statement.
They're, they're all very musically, very talented, for sure, for sure. Um, also, our seventh grade boys and girls competed, um, in the Basketball Mini Weeks Capital Tournament, and the seventh grade girls were the champions, so we're super proud of them. Um, Mrs. Hurst took her, uh, students to El Reno for FCC LA Star Events Competition, and Alec Wonzler, I'm so proud of him, he received a gold medal, and he placed second in the Work Ready Table Setting.
Way to go.
Section, yeah, so he qualified for state, so he gets to go either on March twenty-sixth or March twenty-seventh, and that's, that's a great thing for him. Um, upcoming events tomorrow night, um, Alba Middle School Athletics is, um, hosting the, a crock-pot meal before the basketball dinner, so, come on out and then enjoy some good crock-pot meals. Um, our middle school Spelling Bee is tomorrow, so everybody's, you know, been practicing and getting ready for that. We have, um, I think nineteen kids that are going to participate, so, if you're bored at eight o'clock in the morning, you swing on down and you can watch the Spelling Bee, they don't always love to have visitors, a little bit, you know, they're bracky, but you can always come and watch, it is open. Um, AEC is coming to present this Wednesday, um, to eighth grade students, they'll give them information on the Energy Camp, um, and they've kind of changed that, it used to be an essay, now students can just apply, and based on their resume and things like that, they can go and participate in that Energy Camp, it's a, it's a great thing for them to participate in, so, um, with me tonight, I've, uh, brought, oh my gosh, he's going to, I just lost it. Lost it. Noah. Noah, both. Both, right, okay, he is, um, in Mrs. Barnett's, um, science classroom, his major is, um, Natural Science Ed with a focus on biology, and he wants to teach in the middle school.
Way to go, Noah.
How crazy is that? You don't hear that every day, that's super exciting.
Gotta have him.
He's from Enid, and he graduated from Enid High School, and we're super excited to have him here.
Cool.
Thanks for having me.
All right, for the high school, I'm sorry, that's for, uh, Johnny Barton, he is in my head saying, Vicky, you have to stand up, so, here I am, um, so I want to start with my two guests, I have invited, uh, Lynell Fine.
Nellie Fine, she is one of our, our teachers here at the high school, she teaches English Language Arts at the sophomore level, and she has a student teacher with her, so I would like for, uh, Mrs. Fine to introduce her student teacher.
Sure. Oh, Tyler.
Okay. It's a thing we do.
This is Tyler Blankenship.
And I am thrilled to death to have him in my room, he's doing a super terrific job. Um, he is from Macon, Oklahoma, and, um, he's been doing a lot of tutoring here for several years now, hasn't it been?
Yeah.
Um, with math, et cetera, so the kids already pretty much kind of know, they're used to seeing him in the building, um, and they've taken him on really well in my sophomore English classes, in fact, he wasn't there today because he was at the, at the college, and they're like, where's Mr. B? Where's Mr. B? So they were wondering where he was at, but, um, thrilled to have you here, he's a great asset, and he'll be a great asset wherever he chooses to go, um, in the future, so, I'm excited to have him.
We were delighted to have Tyler to be able to do his student teaching at Alba High School. Um, I think it was three years ago, I even asked him, originally, he was a business major, and, uh, he came and was tutoring for us, and I don't know if that kind of prompted the change into education, or the family background, and the fact that your mom is a teacher.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, he has changed his major, and he has tutored, like I said, for, like Nellie said, for us, for four years, um, we always sent math people to him because I thought that's, I mean, I honestly thought he was a math guy, and he's like, no, it's English Language Arts, like, what? So, he does it all, he is incredibly talented, and the kids love him, he couldn't be any kinder, so, thank you for, for being here, the both of you, and Mrs. Fine for introducing. Mrs. Fine also is our ELL person, our English Language Learner person in, um, our building, and, uh, she translates a lot for us, so she's, she's a huge asset to us as well, so thank you both for being here. Um, as, uh, Mrs. Webster said, Mary Tyree is our Teacher of the Year, she does an outstanding job, uh, she teaches physical science at freshman level, she also teaches aeronautics and our intro to engineering. Um, and Mrs. Tyree is phenomenal at hands-on learning and making sure that those projects are really engaging to the students and bringing them in, a couple of years ago, we switched over to a curriculum in physical science called Project Lead the Way, and every bit of it is hands-on, every bit of it is project-based learning, and she really embraces that, that really speaks to her and her method of learning, and so it's been really great for us. Uh, aeronautics, they've started working with drones, so you walk around the corner, you gotta be really careful, there could be a drone down low, it could be up high, you never really know where you're gonna find that drone as, as they're coming down the hallway, so, it's always a lot of fun in Mrs. Tyree's room, and we're very excited to be able to celebrate her. Um, the last week of Janu-, well, January twentieth through the twenty-fourth was FFA Week, what a great time that was, um, the FFA, they fed teachers one morning breakfast, and you always know, blue and gold sausage is gonna be amazing, uh, and it's made by our FFA moms and some of our FFA kids, and it was absolutely delicious, so it was a great way to start the day, um, and to finish out that week, we had, uh, Bring Your Tractor, Drive Your Tractor to School Day, uh, Mr. Bashiers and I both got the opportunity to participate in that, I rode with Kayla Leeper, Kayla drove this giant combine with such ease and confidence, and I was panicked, uh, the roads were icy, we even had one of our smaller tractors hit some ice and spin, and I was kind of like holding my breath, as we came down skyline, I literally was holding my breath, and Kayla's just driving along, no big deal, and I'm, you know, panicking for her, but she's so super confident, since she's been driving tractor since she was eight, driving combine since she was twelve, and I can barely drive my Prius at fifty-seven, and so, um, she's just, I'm really impressed with her. Uh, Mr. Bashiers got to ride with Joe Cox, and, uh, I can't remember what y'all were in, but, uh, it was a John Deere, do you remember that?
He was one of the newer four-wheel-drive tractors, AD five-thirty maybe, sound right? All I know is, it's a lot different than the tractors I drove.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got GPS and drives itself.
Right, right. So it was a great way to start our day, we had a fabulous time. Um, this past week, InterQuest Canines joined us, and what a fabulous experience that was. Uh, the handler that we had, uh, working with the dogs, they brought two dogs, uh, the handler has been with the company for twenty-five years, the dog that did the major portion of the work was an eight-year-old yellow lab, and he was amazing, I mean, so experienced and so knowledgeable, uh, and then they had a dog in training, that was an eighteen-month-old black lab, and so, the yellow lab, Nash did all of the, the heavy lifting, did all of the work, and then they brought out the eighteen-month-old, and he followed in behind to see, do you hit the same things? What do you see, and, and it was a really great experience. Uh, we took through a section, um, they were, they were careful to say, don't point to anything, don't give us any information, don't say one word about anything, and we were like, there's the south parking lot, off you go. And we only chose that because that was close to where they parked, so it really wasn't even a, um, we don't know where anybody's parked, quite frankly, and, and they didn't know whose car was what, uh, so they did go through and inspect, and had some hits, and some of it was just residue, so it was a great opportunity to have some educational, uh, conversations with students, uh, and so that was really great. Walked through bathrooms, uh, and they kind of showed us what to look for and what to, to be thinking about, uh, but they also brought a box of examples, things to show us, and Mr. Beeler and I were just like, from, oh my gosh, we're floored, um, the, the snacks that they had, the things that they brought to us, that showed us, if they were in a Ziploc baggie, you'd never know, and so, we have to be very vigilant as teachers, as administrators, as parents, to know what to look for. Um, they, they talked to us about the difference between nicotine vapes and THC vapes, and, um, there's mushrooms in vapes, who knew? Who knew? Um, I, I had no idea any of this was going on, ink pens that look like vapes, just so many different products, and it was a fascinating time, so it was a great, great experience. Um, we will be finishing up this month at the high school with our Emotional Poverty book, we have a session this week, um, to go through a couple of chapters, we'll meet in a couple of weeks to go through the last two chapters, and so that has been a really good experience as well, so, uh, I know we've talked a lot about that, but we have really dug in and talked about the brain development, and it has been a great experience, so, there you go.
I did want to stop you real quick, I have this, uh, Kristi Dickerson here, she's just here, she's taking a, uh, she's working on her master's, so she's here to observe, so, I didn't want to let her out, so she's here just to observe, and...
I was hoping she had the song and dance.
You're in the corner, not me.
I'm about me.
So, first, I want to, I want to thank student teachers for being here. Hope you stick with the profession. Yeah, that's a resume. But it is, it's, I, I asked the principals to invite them, I think it's really important for you guys to see this process, and I appreciate you being here tonight. I'm gonna start off talking about just some facility things that's going on, um, we, we continue to upgrade and create problems with our computer network, um, you know, anything mechanical's gonna have problems, that's, that's happening. We're, we're starting to get, give a head a curve, uh, I, I think the next tech, they put in hours, hours, hours of work, and nobody, nobody sees it. It, it really is amazing how much goes into when you click the print button, and it prints across the building, we take that for granted. So, appreciate Brian, Kofen, Daniel, winners, and, and their guys, um, you know, they just, they put a lot of work in, a lot of hours, so, uh, just kind of update on that, uh, between our online, online IT or help tickets, uh, came, went live on January seventh with Next Tech, between the seventh and thirty-first, they completed thirty-six help tickets, I mean, teachers can submit, hey, such, such isn't working, and they have to troubleshoot and fix it. Um, currently, there are twenty-three open tickets, and, and they've been assigned to an IT person, there's eight more in the queue, so, um.
They're knocking down.
Six or seven months ago, we were in the fifty and sixties on that, so, uh, yeah, they're, they're doing a good job that way. We had an additional twenty-two on top of that thirty-six, if you look at that, maybe fifty-eight tickets, but that additional twenty-two were resolved when, when they did all the work upgrading, you know, the switches and the routers and all the things, uh, resolved some of those issues. Uh, the next step is to begin camera upgrades, upgrades, the middle school and the elementary school, so we're using that, uh, school security money that the legislature gave us, it was the last year or two years ago, um, and this is the second year for it, so, using that money to upgrade all of our security systems, so the high school is pretty well online, um, it's a really cool system that I haven't learned all the ins and outs of yet, you know, it's got facial recognition and motion recognition, all the things, so, it's, it's pretty, pretty slick, a little bit, but I've played with it, so, anyway, next stop, middle school, or maybe Longfellow, I can't remember what Brian and I talked about there, we're gonna try to push those cameras out, have everything upgraded for sure by school starting. Uh, phone system, they're, they're pulling wire and doing things, so we're gonna have it up soon, it's the way to put that, look forward next time, that's for sure. Last thing on, on facilities, the elementary principals and I went to Enid, uh, took them in last week to, uh, tour some of the elementary schools, as we talked about this possible bond issue, and we, how do we address Lincoln School and the things, I took them over there to tour Prairie View Elementary, uh, that's the elementary school that's out in the northwest corner town, the newest one, it was built.
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve, right, uh, ten, twelve years ago. Uh, Garfield Elementary, the Prairie View's newest, I think Garfield was built the same time Prairie View was, they're both pod systems, um, completely different architecture, completely different paradigms on how those pods work, completely different, uh, layouts, um, but it was really neat to see such contrasting differences on, on a modern educational philosophy, and the way that, and you think a building's a building, right? Those buildings and the way they flow and they, 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 they could really, if they really make education flow, they could really hold it back, you know, so it was neat to see those two contrasting differences. Uh, then we went out to Chisholm Elementary in North Enid, that was built around the same time, twenty thirteen or fourteen, um, and it's a whole different philosophy there as well, so, I took them to go through the things, you know, what do you like, what do you don't like, I mean, it's easy to draw a picture, right? It felt like I wanted my experts to go through the buildings, so we could turn it to architects, this is what we need, right, so, so we went and did that last week, um, I know they, they had a lot of ideas, they sent me a, a list of things they liked and didn't like between the two. Corporate Works in Haiti will be back Thursday, where we can sit down with that, so, uh, the idea was, let's, let's narrow it down of what the school needs, what our principals need, what, you know, how many classrooms does Kitterburg need, you know, those kinds of things, how many specialty classrooms do we need? If that nailed down, get some ideas, and then get the big committee back together, and start getting those inputs, and then, you know, the community, get that input, and start pushing that, that idea of a bond issue, so. Anyway, that's what we did. Anyway, that's what we did. More to come. We just had the one bus repaired. The rest of the fleet's going real well on transportation. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here to talk about just a legislative update. It's that time of year, legislature just started session. So there's lots and lots of talk. I went to the OASA Legislative Conference on the 22nd and 23rd in Oklahoma City. Lots of discussion about education legislation. And I'm saying that there was, what'd they say, 1900 bills, I think, were filed? That they were filtering through and assigning to committees and doing all the things. So there's a chunk that are for education. You know, some are duplicated, some are close enough where they mash into one bill. That process is really fascinating to watch if you have time to sit back and watch it. Attorney General Ginn and Drummond was there, spoke about his role in legislative process and how his office plays in the checks and balances between things like administrative rules from the State Department to the legislative body, to the governor. And how his office contributes to all that and helped explain some of that kind of stuff. He was there, they had a chairman of the House Education Committee. He's an old pre-cha teacher, Dick Low, I forgot his name, from the Enid-Caw, Amberford County, Chickasha area. He was there, knew Adam Pugh, I think he's chairman of the Senate Education Committee, replacing Greg Treat. So Adam's real pro-education, could be a good guy there. And then I can't remember the third guy, I think he was in charge of the Rules Committee that assigns bills. The first two that want to talk the most. There's a lot of talk up there. Governor wants a flat budget. He wants, he's pushing tax cut, income tax cut, all that. Ginn and Drummond asked for a $90, $80 increase in his department. So it's just that time of year, you've got to hear all this stuff. One thing we need to remember though, that it's just starting, it's just beginning. There's some bills that have already gotten a lot of attention, if you read Facebook and things like that. Reassure everybody, don't panic, okay?
It's a long way to go.
It's a long way to go. They've got to go through several committees. They're going to have to go through maybe a subcommittee, then the Education Committee, then the AMB Committee, then have to pass the House, then it gets sent to the Senate. You go through all the same committees, pass Senate, you have a joint resolution, you pass that. Then the governor's just, it's a long road to get to the finish line. So the biggest thing is don't panic. I do think, I think it's important, especially if you're at this table, be in touch with the legislators. If you're struggling with something, be in touch with them. Stay educated on it, that kind of thing. When we talk to our legislators, be nice. We can agree to disagree, right? That's part of, this is part of our role. But be nice. I know down there, they don't, you don't get very far when you're mean to them. So anyway, that's, I just want to bring that to our forefront or our tip, there's going to be a lot of talk there next year. Anyway.
Item 4.3, Resignation, Retirement, and Resignance.
We've had, we've got four resignations and one retirement. Resignations, Johanna Cuchia was a parent professional at the middle school. Carol Parsons resigned, she was a custodian at the middle school. Sandra Whitney, she was a parent at...
Longfellow.
At Longfellow. And Janelle Gerald was a custodian at the high school. So we had those four resignations. I'll throw a little attention to Sue Whipple. She's been seventh grade grade English teacher at Alba Middle School. Decided to retire after making her first teaching. Been incredibly fulfilling and rewarding profession pursuit over the years. She has had the privilege of working with many talented students, dedicated colleagues for the ministry. The experiences and memories she's gained through her career will stay with her forever. It's been an honor to contribute to the growth and development of the students and work in the environment of the learning is always encouraged. She wants to thank and give this to her gratitude to the staff and students at Alba School. She says, you've all played an important role in making my teaching career so meaningful. I am especially grateful for the relationships I've built with my students and their families, which will remain highlights of her career. So Sue's here. I'd like to thank her for her service to Alba, to our students and the community. As a fellow educator, just thank her for her service to our profession. That could be a long road itself. Good for Sue. Wish her the best and a peaceful retirement.
I have something in quick. I am so appreciative to her. When I was the one who hired her, when she started at the middle school. And there for a while, every year, I went to her and I said, okay, I'm really sorry, but now I need you to teach math. And she'd be like, okay. You know, she did anything and everything that I asked her to do. And she was always...
How many years was she?
Um...
She was at Woodworth?
She was at Woodworth. I want to say eight or nine years here. Something, something close to that. But, so she's kind of taught just anything that I asked her to and has done it. Yeah, when you have an elementary degree, you can do that. Anyways, she was happy with us.
Should be hard to request.
Yes.
Thank you. Any motion to accept those or are they just information? Item number five, item of current business 5.1, Discussion on Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the Alba School District Calendar, school year 2025-26.
Principals and I started in probably December, I think, or first start talking about it in December. I looked at the calendar for next year. I asked the principals to develop versions on their own. And we all came together and cussed and discussed until we got kind of two or three versions that we felt fit our school year and all the gradation rules and all the things. So we sent those two versions out to the staff for their input and vote. Option two, there was 94 votes cast. Option two got 83 of the 94, at 88.3 percent. So 31 sided on that. Option two, let me pull it up here. There's one thing we added, and it's not necessarily in the votes, but something I think is really important. We added a, on the Friday before, all the teachers report, with a new staff orientation and professional, and support staff professional development. So, you know, welcome through all the buildings. They have perspective. Get them logged into time clock, get them ready to sit day. All of those bureaucratic things that go with being a teacher. So we have a new staff orientation on the 8th. Fresh development starting on the 11th. That is the first day of football practice. That's kind of why a lot of schools start there. Fresh development on there, start that Thursday. Very similar to the kickoff from this year. Take Labor Day off in September. Parent Teacher Conference schedule doesn't change, fall break doesn't change. Observe, parent conferences Monday after break. So that's very similar to this year. Full week at Thanksgiving. One little, one little change that we'd like to try, we don't have any of the early release days this year or next year on this calendar. But we did take a half-day professional development on the 12th of December. The 12th is, that's our local, that's our local basketball tournament. So you think about how many people, maybe elementary teachers with kids that maybe work on concession stands or keep it gay or, you know, all the things that go with playing the tournament. This always seems like, I don't know, how big a school, it's all hands on deck to pull a tournament off. So we took a half a day professional development, that's something we used to do with our conference stuff years ago. All the schools meet at one place. So we kind of took that thought and ended a half-day professional development on the 12th and then release teachers to go to the tournament and support our kids. Anyway, that's on the 12th of December, the same two weeks plus a day for Christmas. Fresh development day on the 6th of January to kick off second semester. Martin Luther King Day off, President's Day off in February. Same Parent Teacher Conference schedule in March that we had this year. Take that Friday off before spring break to observe those parent conferences in the spring break. Friday and Monday, bookend Easter next year. And then the last day is school on the 14th, professional day on the 15th. The 18th is highlighted there, that's kind of spillover data for teacher checkout if it's needed. And then high school graduation on the 15th, through to Friday night, maybe 7 o'clock, kind of spot there. Make sure it didn't conflict with the college graduation. I think they're celebrating it on the night, the week before. So have graduation on Friday night and everybody enjoy whatever on the weekend. You know, a lot of family comes in, that gives you a whole weekend to do things. In doing that, the teacher's workday doesn't change, 8:30, 3:30, same number of minutes. We would extend our bell schedules a little bit, 10 or 15 minutes. That gives us the full cover day minutes we need in the day. By doing that, it would allow us to possibly have an encore tutorial, I don't know what you want to call it. Could have about 25 or 30 minute piece in the day for the middle school and high school, particularly for the kids that need extra tutoring or Ds and Fs, those kids, to really focus on that, getting test scores up mentality. Challenge the principals to work towards that Blue Ribbon School. Really want us to be in newspapers for, you want to be published by the State Department for being a good thing, for being one of the Blue Ribbon Schools in Oklahoma, National Blue Ribbon. We need to adjust, do the educational things. I think that's a nice part of it. Anyway, doing all that, we're early in school for 171 and a half days, which is pretty, pretty comparable to most of the schools anymore. Very few schools still have 180 days. Minutes we're in session, the seat time stays the same like cities, just a few minutes a day. So that gives us just right at seven, six and three quarters, seven, emergency days for sickness and snow days and things like that. So it meets all the gradation rules and all that kind of stuff. That's the calendar I would recommend to approve for 2025-26 school year.
What would be the start time for school, the teacher report times? What is the school time?
I think that's site-specific. You know, a high school lunch time may be 40 minutes, where elementary's 20 or 25. So if you think to focus on, except 305 minutes, there's a chance the elementary wouldn't have to change their starting time, just because that lunch is so much shorter than it is at secondary level. Or it could start five minutes later and end five minutes later, you know? So I think that's things that the principals, that's more of a wish, yeah, it's subjective to decide really.
All right. Will be a motion to approve the opposing option number two, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve item 5.11 for if the calendar options.
Arden?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
McDermit?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Item 5.2, Discussion on Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the 2025 Intermodal Agreement, Department of Engineering District, number eight.
This is an agreement that we adhere into every year. I understand it's a little call. Just to downgrade it, it allows the tag officials and people like that to help us with parking lots and entrances and, you know, let's get call officials to say, hey, you run greater across. So I'd recommend to approve that resolution.
Is there a motion?
If motion will approve item 5.2 is presented.
Second.
Hansen?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
5.3, Discussion on Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the $10,000 anonymous donation to the Owl High School Speech and Debate Council.
We had a $10,000 anonymous donation, a speech debate program. So I would recommend to approve that.
I moved and we approved the $10,000 donation to the Owl High School Speech and Debate Council.
Apple's second though.
Singleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
And now item of new business? Item number seven, Propose Executive Session to Discuss the Employment of Joseph Killen for 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307 being one. Item number eight, I'm taking a motion to vote to be into executive session. So move.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Thank you all.